My dad was a painter and he was the saint like when he touches forearms, it's thick as my thighs.
Yeah, like Popeye.
Yeah.
Is he here for that?
See, I was born with a very rare mutation called harmless.
Ah.
Well, I'll show you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Jaren, did you sign in on the sheets? Just when you leave, if you'd sign in on your way out, that would be fine.
Yeah.
Steve, we're starting our meeting. Oh, no, we're not. Eric's not here.
Or Angelica.
Angelica's gonna be a little late.
How did she sign in?
Her daughter, son, child.
Working availability level.
Not anymore. Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
Wow, so Captain, she's gonna be a little late. So Davey's taking notes until then?
No, Eric is.
With those glasses, he could.
I know. Davey, you aren't notes until Angelica. It's not time to do it.
Okay.
I'll start writing in my signature.
Good evening and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Reedfield Select Board. It is January 8th at 6:30. I'll call the meeting to order. Oops. Keep joining the pledge of allegiance, please, if you are able.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll start tonight with our regular meeting items, starting off with the minutes from September 11th and December 11th. September 11th was our retreat. We've seen them, but we did not actually approve them. So I would take a motion from someone.
Are you sure?
Angelica and Eric went through to do the year end stuff and they were not approved.
Well, I thought we did them in October. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve our minutes from the retreat of September 11th.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none of those in favor, it is unanimous. I guess Eric's not really taking minutes because Angelica will just look at the tape.
I'm gonna have her look at the tape.
Okay.
See, he took minutes. I took minutes for the assessors meeting already, so I'm booked out.
You're all right. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the meeting minutes from December 11th. I'll let, I'm not sure what's in the packet, but I made one change. It was a typo. It was supposed to say turn and it said run. Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of December 11th as stated.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none of those in favor, it is unanimous. Moving on to item 24-081, warrants 27 to 30. Steve and I were trying to decide who was doing these. Aha, 27 is Steve's.
And 28 too.
And 28, yes. Are you ready for those?
I am.
All right.
Yep, so especially because 27 is super easy. It's just the salaries for employees and that's $22,989.90. And I think it's 90 cents. Oh, I said that.
69. 69 cents.
There we go. And then warrant 28 is all vendors and, you know, relatively small by normal standards. It's 39,835.53 cents. So the total of the two of them is $62,822.22. And the major things in the vendor list, probably, yeah, well, almost a third of the money was spent on either assessing. There's $2,000 to Dave LeDoux for assessing and $3,500 to Deargo. That's the company that's doing the rebalance, right? So revaluation and then our usual hauling away the stuff we don't want. Waste management was $11,935 and change and EcoMaine was $1,833 and change. So those are the big items. Nothing else in there was over $1,000. That's what I got.
I'm gonna miss the entertainment.
Oh, that was not all that entertaining. I can juggle or something if you want.
What was Archie's? Did you mention that one?
Oh, that was more is hauling away stuff. That's the, that's the one where they haul their stuff to Nordwalk. The stuff that goes to the landfill.
The reason for that is that they, they have compactor trucks and if they empty one of those into our compactor, it fills up 60% of capacity. So we have them shipped directly to the landfill.
And they get billed for it because they delivered it. So then we reimburse them.
Reimbursement, yeah.
Right.
Yep.
So I have a quick question. Should we wait for like a motion or especially where? I just wanted to ask the redundancy. I think I know the answer with David LeDoux and then the company. So David is paid as the assessor and the company is paid as?
The revaluation.
For the revaluation.
Gotcha. Thank you.
There's separate, separate working days. You know, he has his two days a month as assessor and then just the work for the, the revaluation just gets done as needed.
And not necessarily just by David because we hired his company.
That's right. Yeah, his, his, his wife and his son-in-law and others are involved.
I'll make a motion to approve warrants 27, 28 to the sum of $6,825.22.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? It is unanimous. Okay, and then the next one is for me. All right, so this one actually was pretty simple because we paid the school this time. So the payroll is warrant 29, I guess. And it was for $23,709.90. There's the 90 cents. And the accounts payable for different vendors is $457,416.99. The highlights of the school district is $338,036. Scott Horn had two, one check, but for two different things. I'm gonna get that here. He did some road repair for us after the storm, I believe, for $14.75 and the remainder was the $46,162 for snow plowing and winter maintenance. And then we had cushion construction for a total of 18, 815.45 and that was all road repair and hauling of brush and huge trees related to the storm. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. Anything else of interest? Just paying taxes, payroll taxes, insurance, somewhere in there. Main municipal, we paid $17,565.30. And that is for workers' comp, $5,050 and our property and liability insurance, $12,014. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
I have a quick question for Eric. I was just curious, like some of those storm expenses, is there any prospect for getting reimbursed for any of those?
Yeah, good prospects. I touched on that a little bit in my report, but just quickly, we should get about 80% of that now for the federal government. We expect a federal declaration.
That's what I thought.
And then we'll get a portion from the state as well. So we should get most of that reimbursed, but it'll take, you know, six months. That's okay.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
One other quick question. What is the $11,686.50 to Andrews Coggin County?
That's for dispatching for PSEP because we don't use Somerset anymore.
Yeah, so they weren't gonna work with us or any other municipalities in this county and they, we basically had to migrate over to Andrews Coggin.
Is that for what time period? A month?
No, that's, I think either, I think that's the full year, but I'm 100% sure.
It's either the, I think it's the full year. Okay. I could look it up if you like. That's okay. Okay. As long as it was more than a month. I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept warrants, was it 28, 29?
29 and 30.
29 and 30.
In the total amount of 481, 12689?
You got it.
Okay.
What she said.
A second by Steve. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none of those in favor, it is unanimous. Okay, and it has been signed by everybody. I just wanted to make a note that we're still having some, we need some more clarity on warrant signing. We had all agreed that we were going to come in between Monday at 3:00 and Tuesday at noon to sign the warrants. And we're still not getting everybody to do that. That puts undue stress on the finance clerk to take care of sending out our bills. So if you could please do that. The good news is there are only two more dates you have to do that. Tuesday, the 16th, because Monday is Martin Luther King Day, so it's a holiday. And then the 29th, which is a Monday. All the rest for the whole fiscal year are on select board meeting dates. So we'll be here anyway. So the only person that has to come in is either me for this quarter and then Dave, you, which really puts the stress on because you've got to do it before our meeting.
Right.
But it can be up here when we close for the day, right, or the warrant?
Yeah, we can, we can make, should be able to make that work most of the time. I can't guarantee all the time, but most of the time we should be able to.
Okay, so if it's up here, whenever you come in, if you just come in a half hour early or something or 20 minutes, you can go over it before the meeting because then you'll have to tell us about it.
Right. Yeah, that'll work.
Okay, great. All right.
Can I just ask, I know there was a mention of five signatures. Are we only gonna need three?
No, we need five. In the financial policy procedures, I looked them up today, it says, once approved, three members of the select board must then sign the warrant. But we're all supposed to be signing it. So it's kind of a special thing to have just three. I think we need to make a policy on this because we have a separate policy for the state warrants and for the payroll that allows us to do one. One for, two for payroll.
Payroll, one for payroll, three for minimum for the warrants, the other warrants, the financial warrants.
So we have a separate policy for the state dispersment.
Yes, states are also one.
To send them back their fees for like licenses and all sorts of registrations and then one for payroll. And we have to have three, well, we're supposed to have five for the warrant, but we don't actually have a policy for that. It's just in the financial procedures that's for the employee. So I think we ought to make a policy that we think is, we think we can all live with.
I was gonna ask, is that a change? Because we always only needed three up until now, right?
We needed at least three.
Correct.
Right, but one of our responsibilities is to approve spending and so we should all be doing that because that's part of our responsibility.
My only thing was getting here even when I'm doing warrants is near impossible and it's in our packet. I review it, you know, and I come with questions on it. So that's when, if we have questions, like I reviewed it, that's when it can be, I just, it's gonna be a difficulty. I mean, granted, from, I guess there's a lot coming up that are gonna be meeting dates, which is great, but on, on average, I will not probably be a fifth one by a Tuesday.
Okay. So that's why I think we need a policy so that we can decide if that's acceptable or not acceptable. So then we all have the same expectations. So that was just a note. So really appreciate that. It makes the office run a lot smoother. Okay, moving on, we have communications. We have select board communications. Are there any members of the board that have a general announcement?
Are we gonna do the thing where we like talk about our goals?
That's later.
That's later. Okay.
Sound ready.
Well, I'm ready to start.
All right.
There are some things I'd like to say about it, but we can say it later.
Are you sure you wanna wait? Because it sounds like you really wanna go.
No, he's coming. Do you have something, Sean?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I thank all the volunteer firefighters for all their help and any other members of the community during the storm on December 18th. Felt like it was yesterday, but it was actually three weeks ago. And also just, you know, the town staff that worked hard to clean up. It was quite something. So I appreciate everybody's getting out there and I definitely felt a lot of community during that week as I stumbled around for a few days.
Should we thank them in advance for this Wednesday?
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah.
Be ready.
That's awesome. All right. Thank you, Sean. Moving on to staff communications, the town manager's report. Eric, is there a treasurer's report?
Yeah, that got up around four. I'll start with the town manager's report, focusing the first section is administration and personnel. The town office and library will be closed for Martin Luther King Junior Day on January 15th. That's the, this coming Monday. So we'll be closed for that day. Work is progressing with the land use ordinance provisions required under LD 2003, which is the one that relates to accessory housing. We've had some good feedback and engagement from a consultant that we worked with and the planning board's actually gonna be considering that tomorrow night. So as the select board has handled a number of other ordinance revisions, they're pushing and moving that one through. So that'll go through them and then come through the select board for review as well. The revaluation process is slowing down for the next few months as we get into the off season. The, we did a sample of about 50 homes with the assessor to kind of help ascertain what the process was gonna look like, how much effort was gonna be involved, what some of the things we might need to look out for as we go through the revaluation were. And he's found some, some really interesting numbers. And what I wanted to point out is that with a revaluation, you always see some properties increasing value, some staying the same and some decreasing value. That's how it all kind of balances out, but because some things depreciate, some things appreciate. But what we saw was about 50% of the homes had an increase in value, about 25% had neutral, so no change in value and 25% had a decrease in value. So that's actually an interesting mix, but what it reflects is the fact that we've seen a lot of increase in the quality of homes in town 20 years ago. We might have seen a different type, you know, a quality of construction. We're seeing, you know, better, bigger homes and the values going up and a lot of rework as well that's been going on. So that was something we saw during COVID. We knew it was there, but this first pass of a test for the revaluation kind of proved it out that we are seeing an increase in quality in, in, in the housing stock in Reedfield. So that's interesting. Also makes things more expensive. So this LD 2003 thing really fits in well and it's interesting to think about those things together. The December 18, 19 storm was disruptive to municipal operations. So I just want to thank everybody again, as Sean did, for their contributions to doing that. And let the board know and the public know that that put us back a week or two. And then we had the holidays on top and that kind of pushed things around a little. So we, we did have a staff meeting on December 21st. It was very successful. I want to thank Catherine for attending and speaking to the staff on behalf of the board. And again, want to thank the board for contributing to the gift baskets. We all very much appreciate those. So thank you for that. And then annual evaluations for employees will be taking place in January. That's something that I've sometimes let slip into February and sometimes even a little bit further, but I'm really wanting to make sure we get that taken care of promptly this year. Moving on to roads, traffic, parking and safety. The winter conditions, as you know, have, have come back pretty quickly. We have had some variability in the weather. This wet, dry, cold, warm trend has been problematic. It's hard to manage. I was talking to Scott Horn this, this afternoon and this is the first normal storm we've had all year. It's probably the only one we're gonna have. It looks like we've got the next two are gonna be that sloppy, wet, mixed crossover stuff. It's hard to manage that, but Scott's doing a good job, but we have the capacity to handle pretty much anything. So I just want to assure people of that. Let's see, debris from the December storm has been cleared as much as possible, likely until the spring. What's on the ground now is gonna stay there for the most part. We might be able to get out and clear some other stuff, but the town crews did get most everything pushed back. And I just want to remind residents that we, the town is responsible for things in the right of way that might be an obstruction or a hazard and that's qualitative, the hazard piece. But we can't take care of property or trees that are on private property. That's not something we're allowed to do or will do. Whether it's us or the contractors, our responsibility is just in the right of way and it's a, an, an option to, to some extent. But I just want to thank residents for being aware of that. Because we can't really take care of everything. We can't take care of all the little pieces of brush. We do our best and we have to prioritize work. So there was a lot there. It's gonna take some time to clear up, but if we all work together, we can make it happen. The official church road sidewalk hearing will now be held on February 20th at 6:30 PM. We are awaiting review of the 50% plans and materials submitted by Goro Palmer to the main DOT. And those, that just happened last week. So they need a two-week review period minimum. And I will say that this isn't a fault with MDOT. They have their priorities. Goro Palmer missed the submission deadline and so it bucked everything back by a couple of weeks. So we're gonna be February 20th at 6:30 PM. And it does make sense for us to wait until the DOT review is completed before we actually schedule that because they might need to send it back and forth a few times. So that as soon as we have final confirmation from DOT, we will notify the public. Uh, so that um, uh, as soon as we have final confirmation from DOT, we will notify the public. But I just wanted to let everybody know in advance that that's been pushed back to the twentieth of February. Uh, maintenance, town maintenance staff and volunteers uh did make some progress at the library over the last couple of weeks. Uh, in between storm work and other activities. Uh, but we are gonna be seeing that um, that project move back. Uh, until uh sometime in February for the project completion uh or substantive completion on the second floor there. Uh, I know the library board uh and, and I and the staff are all excited to move that along, get it done. Um, it is continuing on as a priority. We're just balancing it with the other pressing winter maintenance needs. Um, and we had a fuel leak uh in the basement here at the town office. Uh, with some, uh, our oil tanks uh were overfilled. There was an issue with the, the whistle valve or something and the float valves weren't working. There were some. Problems. Uh, so we had a couple gallons of oil in the basement. Um, that needed to be addressed and we also had. Um, a leak, uh, our boiler dumped twenty, thirty gallons of, of liquid onto the um, onto the ground. Uh, and that had to be cleaned up and then recharged. So we had some issues. Um, it's just a reminder to us that that system's getting old. Uh, and when we talk about budget this year or next, I do wanna try to. Uh, start to prioritize and think about that replacement. Uh, because it is twenty-five years old, maybe thirty now. Uh, we need to look at that. So. Um, that's maintenance and then transfer station. Uh, we have a quarterly solid waste committee scheduled. It was gonna be the tenth, but because of this upcoming storm, rescheduled Catherine to.
Twenty-fourth.
The twenty-fourth of January, same time, uh, five thirty PM here at Reed Field.
Great.
Uh, and then my, my big capping uh announcement for the town manager's report is. We have a new program at the transfer station for battery recycling. Uh, in the past, we hadn't been able to accept. The uh like DeWalt or uh, you know, Cobalt or wherever they are, those rechargeable tool batteries. Uh, now we can take everything pretty much up to, uh, we, I won't say car batteries, cause we're not ready for those yet. But we can take all the tool batteries, uh, all the rechargeable batteries at the transfer station. Folks don't have to bring them belows anymore. You can just bring them in with your regular waste. Uh, and they're disposed of for free. So that's pretty cool. So I'm really happy about that. And uh, that's my town manager's report. I'm happy to take any questions.
I have a question and a pat on the back. One thing though, like the batteries, is there a specific. Spot at the transfer station that those are deposited at?
Yeah, it will be in the e-waste container, but you always wanna talk to an attendant because. Um, once you get in that building, it's really important to make sure things are separated appropriately. So always talk to an attendant when you have something like that because we don't need battery fires. Um, so um, yeah, good question. Thanks, Carol.
But um, the, the question I had though was the church road sidewalk. So. Did we send letters out to the church road residents on?
We, we did not. We were, we were going to for the meeting and then um.
Good.
It got rescheduled, so I'm glad we didn't.
Yes, I am too. And kudos to you. Um, I saw pictures of Eric wielding chainsaws, but I really wanted to thank him. Um. Uh, one of his near neighbors, I couldn't find him for a couple of days and Eric was already on it and reached out to him and convinced him. To go seek shelter in a hotel because he would not have done well. So he um reached out, made sure people right around him that were elderly and. Um, really, you know, looked out for his neighborhood.
So, thanks. Yeah, we would all do the same thing, I expect. So, yep.
Well, we'd like to think so, but maybe not. So just say thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Um, so uh, if there's nothing else, I'll go on to the treasurer's report. Uh, and this is for the month of December. Um, it was a relatively quiet month. Uh, we do have a few things happening that I wanna point out. Um, the reconciliation was completed through the thirty-first. Uh, no issues. Everything was in balance, no bad checks. It was a good month. Um, uh, those be incoming, not outgoing. We don't, we don't do that. Um, uh, with investments, we do have that first uh laddered SEDAR um coming uh due in February. Um, and so um, unless there's objection from the board, what I'd like to do uh is look around and uh find a similar investment, either. Um, a high yield savings or, or another uh SEDAR, so we can reinvest that five hundred thousand dollars for a term six months to twelve months. Um, likely, I'll, I'll go with six because that's the term of the expiring um uh investment. Uh, and that would give us um, I expect another five percent yield. So we'd be looking at about twelve thousand um. Uh, for that six month, uh, twelve thousand five hundred for that six month period. So um. Uh, we do have sufficient cash on hand to handle that. Um, and we have other investments that are coming due in three months, six months, nine months. So we can continue to roll through this stuff. And if we need to pull out cash, we never have to wait more than three months um, without having to risk anything. So. That's that. Uh, the uh audit uh is continuing to roll on. Uh, we've gotten, I think, all of the documentation to the auditors. So we should still be on track to have some draft numbers by the end of the uh, end of the month. Um, and it's, it's interesting as Teresa and I are getting more and more into the budget process for this year, um, it does tie in well with the audit work. Um, and preparing for next year's um, uh, you know, budget in consideration of what we see uh for, for balances and the work we've done to help prepare that audit. Helps with the budget. So uh, comments uh for this month, um, really just uh. Things are, I'll just say things are pretty much on track. Uh, I don't see anything extraordinary, uh, nothing that's really even worth noting. The one exception would be motor vehicles. Uh, we have seen now a, a trend with motor vehicles revenues being down um for the year. And for the month to date, for fairly consistently, a little bit of wobble there with uh some one or two months being positive, but. Out of the last six, most of them have been less than uh projected or less than last year. So we are probably going to be either on target or a little bit below with our um motor vehicles revenue. That's important because it's the biggest uh non-tax revenue stream we have or one of them. Uh, this year we budgeted six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, if we hold steady, we'll probably come in six twenty, six twenty-five, not terrible. Uh, and I'm hoping things improve, but we'll see what happens in the next six months. So I just wanted to point that out. Uh, uh, otherwise, uh, revenues and expenditures are, are more or less as projected around fifty percent, all things being equal. And as I always say, they never are. There's always a little bit of variation, but uh, things are looking good and I'm happy to take any questions.
Uh, Eric asked if we were all right with him finding a similar investment. Vehicle at the same uh time period of six months. Is anyone objecting to that?
Not a bit.
No.
Sounds good.
Okay, I'll move forward with that.
Well, great. Thank you very much. Appreciate the reports.
I do, Catherine. I think I put fifteen minutes and probably twelve, right?
Yes.
Yeah, right.
And thank you. We always have the discussion about should it be ten minutes or fifteen? Eric wants ten and we always use fifteen. So I'm like, let's just put fifteen. So then you beat it. Oh, well.
Oh.
Boards committees and commissions. I don't believe, is there anybody here who wants to speak about a board committee commission? No, okay. So we do have some minutes. I was reading through them today. They were interesting. Um, it's, it's very. Interesting again, um, to have the draft minutes become the approved minutes. So as I was reading them, I'm like, I think I read these before and that's why. So um, really appreciate that. But thank you to the fairgrounds committee for new minutes and approved minutes. It looks like they have been very busy, which I'm sure you're gonna report out to us on in a few minutes. And the planning board minutes were really well done. Thank you, Angelica, being their secretary. Uh, a lot going on and uh I'll report out a little bit about a meeting with Paula. So thank you to those committees for that. And now is time for public communication. If there are any members of the public, yes, excuse me, sorry.
Sorry, if I had a question on a committee report, can I?
Okay, sure. I don't know that we can do it, but.
You guys probably know the answer. So um, like there's a hearing tomorrow on. Solar, way around Main Street. I know this kinda keeps us battered around. Where kind of on Main Street is that gonna be located?
Down behind. So it's down by the one thirty-five-ish, right?
Yeah, so um.
The far end.
You start at the existing solar farm headed towards Manchester. You go down the dip, kind of up the other side. Carlton Pond is on your, Carlton Pond is on your, your right. It's just past Carlton Pond. There's an access road right there that goes to. Maybe a, a, a ten acre field. Um, maybe it's more, but it's like a thirty or forty acre parcel, I believe. It would be down in there.
Right or left like Carlton?
Right, right, and same side as Carlton Pond.
And not visible from the road.
Okay.
In reading the minutes today, I think that's where I saw it. It said that it had been a sludge site, a sludge waste site. And so the soils are not conducive to growing anything particularly desirable.
Other than PFAS.
Let's hope so.
And I just had one other question. There was, I know, uh, cushy construction and, and additional storage unit. Do you know, I know they were talking about like tree buffers. I don't know if you guys know this. Are they required to add new tree hedges? Just, I know there was discussion of screening um, storage unit things with a hedge or a fence. I don't know if they required him to do that.
I think they, they may have, but um, I don't know with this ca- I don't, I don't know. That's a question for the planning board, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
I think from the sounds of it, the way I was reading it, that's the buffer.
Talked about the sides, but I didn't know if there was a screen like, but, but between him and neighbors, but I didn't know if there was a visibility.
We talked about like twenty feet deep of trees till you get to a butter's lines and that's a pretty darn good screen.
I was thinking like, yeah, I, I thought they talked about screening it from view.
Yeah, that's a typical uh request and requirement for that type of construction. Uh, but um, I, I don't know in this particular case.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
Nope.
Okay, now we're time for public communication. If there's any member and yes, Jaren, if you'd like to come up to the podium. And if there's anyone online who wants to speak, um, I will recognize you after Jaren.
Jaren, I got a couple of things. I'll try to be as quick as I can. Uh, first thing is a result from the storm. Uh, I have something else about that later. But I lost internet for eleven days as someone who worked from home. That's pretty important to me. I know that community fiber got shot down two years ago. I'd like to voice my support for some sort of community fiber and see if there's anything in the works, cause realistically Spectrum's not gonna do it. They're at technical capacity. They can't give me faster speeds at this point uh without going to fiber. And they're not gonna do it, at least not in a reasonable amount of time. So I was hoping that would. Be something the select board might make a priority. I was hoping there might be some progress on that.
Um, there really isn't any at this point, but there is a new connectivity committee that met once and will be meeting again at the end of January. Uh, but what we're doing is looking at the cable franchise agreement. Um, and it's sort of a backdoor approach to getting the internet because most people aren't subscribing. For cable TV, they're subscribing through Spectrum to get internet. Um, but if they're bringing cable TV to an address, that also means that you can have internet at that address. That doesn't mean it would be high speed. Um, but my rev. It's really rewriting the whole cable TV ordinance. Um, it, it should make it so that Spectrum or whoever is going to have the contract covers the entire town. But it doesn't sound like you're an address that's not served. You're, you're an address that's.
I had to pay Spectrum a thousand dollars out of pocket just to get them to connect me. They wouldn't connect me without doing that. And I pay over a thousand dollars a year and direct fast. They cannot go any faster. It's not an option.
Right.
So.
It doesn't appear that there's anything on a town level that we're gonna be able to do.
Yep.
Um, unfortunately, we have a lot of cable coverage, which makes us an undesirable town for anyone else to come into. Because they would have competition, whereas uh Fayette is now getting covered by Phidium. Because the matrix thing fell through, right?
Yes.
But they have something like. Eight percent covered. So they know that if they come into town, people are going to take their product. And so that's why no one's interested in us.
Yeah, and I mean, it's, Spectrum has monopoly, which.
Doesn't seem.
Problematic to me, but.
Well, Jaren, I will talk to you uh later um about that thousand dollars because they may not have. They, they probably shouldn't be charging as many people that connection fee as they have because they're supposed to be expanding service and. Wi- without doing that in some cases. And I think that they've been billing people. I mean, somebody on Tallwood paid like three or four thousand. It was insane. Um, and so there's been some of that. Billing going on that I think is highly questionable, given the contract that we have. But again, uh, it, it, it's, it might just be the nuance between, well, we're doing this for internet, not for cable. So I wanna talk to you more about it because I expect that there are some things, we might be able to get some reimbursement. We'll, we'll, we'll do what we can anyway.
Sure.
But that's, uh, thanks for sharing that. I'm sorry to hear it.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Yeah.
Mostly just voicing my support for, let's get community fiber going again. It's too bad we were shot down before. Let's figure out an option that works for people in town. Really what I'm mostly here to say. Uh, second thing is I just wanted to share some stuff about CMP changes, if that's all right.
Sure.
Uh, so CMP is new year, they went up on the rates, but they are now offering a technology rate, which may be significantly cheaper for residents. Uh, that use a large amount of electricity, talking eight hundred kilowatt hours a month or more. Um, they're very handy calculator. You could just plug in your numbers on their website. And they're also doing a pilot program that they're calling their heat pump program, uh, where they bill. At two different rates. So six months during the winter, they bill it one rate, which is very low. And they charge more for the other six months to make up for it. But for most residents, if you have a heat pump, which is a requirement of the program, it is going to end up being cheaper for most people. But again, they have a calculator. You can plug in your own numbers and see exactly how much it's gonna cost you. I just, I just wanna put that out to residents. That one is a pilot program and is limited to five thousand people. So if people are interested, they do need to sign up for it probably sooner than later. And then the last thing kinda goes in the next thing on the agenda. I just wanted to share my experience on the storm. Sounds like I was definitely not the only one, especially not the only one in the room. Uh, but. As you may or may not know, I live on the end of the dead end road. I was trapped. I couldn't get out. I called CMP. They said, there's nothing we can do for you. We don't care. Stay safe. Pretty much verbatim. Uh, I called the Winfield Fire Department because one of the trees down was on their line and they said, yeah, you know. We're not gonna do anything, which concerned me, cause if I had a medical event. No one could get to me. Uh, and then I called Eric, uh, but because. USA was down. He wasn't able to respond for two days, no fault of his own. I had a really bad connection. I didn't have internet for at least a day, even on my cell service, uh, probably cause everyone was trying to use it. So I thought I would just share that since you guys are gonna be talking about that tonight. What should probably happen in that type of situation? Cause it was thankfully perfectly fine, but could have been very bad.
Now, that's incredibly useful information for us to have. So thank you for sharing that.
Thank you guys.
Thank you, Jaren.
Is there anyone online who wanted to speak? Anyone else in the room? Okay, we will move on then to old business. Item twenty-four dash oh four three here and consider an update on the fairgrounds project. Take it away, Stephen John.
All right, well, um, pretty sure for we are meeting this Thursday, six thirty. Uh, that's our last meeting before our public hearing. And um, we had gotten a plan from Regina Leonard, the um landscape arch- architect we'd. Gotten and we, and we, and she's been incredibly responsive because the committee looked at the plan and said, well, it'd be really nice if we could orient this basketball courts. We get a little better. View of the fields from it. And um, she made that adjustment over the Christmas holidays, like bam, like that. And it was great. And um, because we had this public hearing coming up, we um sent that out to the committee and asked for comments and. If they approved it and they, they liked it a lot. So that's what you see um in the messenger and what, you know, the public will be looking at. And so we're meeting uh this Thursday at six thirty, like I said, here to make plans for the public meeting. And then the public meeting is next Wednesday, the seventeenth at six thirty. And um, I really hope everybody comes, cause I, I mean. I'm clearly biased, but uh, I just have been like super impressed with the working group that. People have been like asking really hard questions and really doing a great job of, you know, coming to consensus on things and um. I, I just don't. In education, my primary field work for a long time is like committees where, where good ideas went to die. In education, my primary field work for a long time is like committees where where good ideas went to die. And um this was not that way. It was just there's just the working group was tremendous.
That's awesome.
Really cool.
Will we be set up for a large crowd, Eric?
Yes, we will. And we'll have Zoom.
Yeah, we'll have Zoom. Excellent. Thank you, Steve. Uh Sean pointed out to me that I messed up on the agenda, so I skipped over.
We have a question on fairgrounds. Can we?
Oh, sorry. Who has a question?
Oh, yes, sorry. I love where the basketball court is. The question I have is in front of that, is that trees like in front of the basketball court?
Possibly.
Between it and baseball field?
And and the reason in part for that is that it's it's nice not to be playing um basketball court that's baked fully by the sun. And so the idea there is to provide some sun protection for the people. I'm serious. You're making a face at me, but.
I'm just saying the whole idea where we didn't want it like tucked way up by the road is so parents can kind of
Agreed.
A tree screen.
But the trees, you know, if you prune off the lower branches, you can see the court, but the trees, this crown of the tree shields the court from the sun. You know what I mean? So if you're sitting on the field, you can see the court, right? But if the crown of the trees is above, you know, eight or nine feet above the ground, they do a good job of shielding the the court from the sun, but still unable people to see the court.
I I would, I don't know. I I envision a a family area being open, talk about open space, but I'm talking about real open space where we're not paying for trees, additional trees, where kids can run and balls can be thrown and um also the more shaded, the more the mosquitoes are. But let me let me pass that up.
Okay.
One thing I don't see in the plan is like a place maybe where bikes can go, like.
You mean like a a bike?
Rack, like rack, a good size area for bikes because I think that might be and not up by, I don't think we want them up by the parking area. Um otherwise, there's gonna be bikes like laying all over the place. So maybe that's a suggestion. The other thing that we heard at the meetings was maybe at least a couple handicap parking spots for grandpa to go get closer because that is quite a hike from the parking lot. Um and there is quite a hill. It looks like maybe there's more trees. I don't know if that's to the right hand side of the of the trail. Is that where we used to do um trunk or treat and stuff? I don't know if there's a spot there for just a couple of that are like labeled handicap, just so people can drop someone off or someone that truly can't make that hike and is not like in a wheelchair or something.
I've got this.
You got this.
Yeah, so see, see off the, if you're looking at this and on the top right of the parking lot, the opening to the trail. Do you see that spot where it opens the trail? Yeah.
Are you looking at the blueprint?
At the parking lot?
Yeah, the top right corner of the parking lot. That access road is big enough for a vehicle so that a vehicle can go down to the fields. And so just like at the high school, the middle school, somebody that needs to get closer down or dropped off down by the seats can get dropped off down there.
And you can turn around somewhere down there to come back up and drop?
Yeah.
Well, like a K turn, not like a big circle.
Yeah, but it's just similar to the thought of what happens at the high school, middle school. Where it's quite a walk down football field or or even the softball field or whatever. Um so you could, there is that road, some people can drive.
It's also, you know, it's a multi-use roadway. It's also for maintenance vehicles and stuff, so. Wide enough for people to drive down.
Okay, great.
Okay, so I think that line of questioning is probably more appropriate for the meeting.
I'm just saying if they have a meeting coming up Thursday in anticipation of some of the questions that might come up the following week, I think a bike rack
There is a bike rack down there.
Disgust.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so back to my mistake. We're supposed to be doing our workshop next. So we'll switch from old business back to the workshop. So Lee, you're gonna be front and center. So we're gonna do a emergency operations plan review, tabletop discussion, not a tabletop exercise um with our chief focusing on response lessons learned and anticipated operational changes related to the latest storm we had. Lee, how would you like to do this? Nope.
While while Lee's coming up, I do want to respond to Jaren a little bit and say that the connectivity committee meeting is going to be on Zoom and here at the town office on January twenty ninth at six thirty PM. Uh we will have representatives from the uh Mean Connectivity Authority here talk about how they can help the town with our connectivity and access. So um that's on the website and um well, I'll probably send on a notice of some kind, but just wanted to give you a heads up on that. Sorry, Lee.
Let's hit the EOP discussion.
Yes.
I read through the minutes that town staff has gone through and updated all the dependencies numbers, which is good. And that's part of having this front side up every year, so we update that. At some point, it would be nice to actually sit down and have a training with everybody and go through. Um I'm not gonna quarterback certain events that happened in October, but it just kind of goes to show you how important that emergency operations plan is when you start reading down through it. Because if there's a large event like happens, the media wants to know. They're all gonna be calling here, asking everybody, but it just goes to show you how we need to stick together as a team, have our meeting prior to press releases and be real cognitively of what you say finds its way to the media and can kind of blossom out of out of control. And we don't want that. We want to send out factual information. We wanna keep the public updated. So even sitting back watching over there, press conferences were pretty fuel and fire between. Every training I've gone to, they've always you know, you gotta have a press conference every day, certain time, that gives the command structure, unified command, time to set. Go through everything that's happened in the operational period that we just went through and then have a statement to the press. Um the press wants information. Sometimes we might not have no information, but I think even having a meeting, whether you have new information, you just can reiterate, you know, we're working well as soon as we get information. There's nothing that says uh we're gonna do a press conference at four o'clock. Does it mean that you can't have another press conference at six o'clock if pertinent information comes up? I just, I think sitting and watching everything, listening to people's comments, that was a big thing. So communication is real important in situations like that. Getting correct information out. So that was kind of mine. Like I said, it was eye opening to watch that.
It was really interesting. The first couple of press conferences, the interpreter was off to the side and wasn't in view of the camera. And you had four deaf people who had all passed away from the event. And so you had all that community who was watching and couldn't actually watch on TV because it wasn't being shown. And so that was a learning curve for them. Um so there's there's always something we can take away from these tragedies um as positive and and try and be better if we can when we find ourselves there.
We're still working on getting kind of back EMA to get a G four oh two course, because I know you need it. Did you end up?
Apparently I haven't either.
Everyone needs it except for me.
Yeah, I mean, in the meantime, because you guys aren't busy, but if you did the ICS eight hundred, it's online. And it just kind of, it's a framework, national internet management system. It's a framework that kind of lets you know in a big thing how it's supposed to operate.
So is I S C?
I I C S eight hundred.
But that won't suffice.
It won't suffice for G four oh two, but it it gives you an insight into how when there's a disaster, how the command structure works and how we come up with a unified can because it, you know, it's gonna be the fire department, it's gonna be EMS, could be PDA, it's a plane crash, it's gonna be the FS, FAA, and then that's NTSB. So there's, if it's the railroad, it's gonna be their people. So you got a whole bunch of different organizations coming. Now then we'll have operational meetings and then get to the press releases. But we all meet and discuss what's going on.
And sort of the key takeaway from that is for us is that the select board role is to approve finances so that um whatever's needed, the town has to pay for, and then we can apply for reimbursement. So it could be hundreds of thousands of dollars. It could be just a few thousand, but like if if a group of people needs to be fed, somebody has to pay for it because the store is not gonna give it to us for free. And Eric can't just go do that. So those are the kinds of things that we have to be available for, provided that we're not caught in the disaster or that we're prevented from getting here because of the disaster. You know, if you're in Augusta and there's no way to get from Augusta to here without going to Watermill, um that changes the complexity of things. Uh and then as Lee said, the communication piece is big for us. Just because we are on the select board doesn't mean that we get to speak. Eric is our designated speaker um under the current EOP. Is that right, Lee?
Yes, and not everybody's position on the EOP. When that was done, it was kind of taking everybody's, what they do as a normal job and just folding it in the emergency operations plan. So like maintenance, they do maintenance. It'd be stupid to say, Ben, here, you're gonna do something that you've never done before. So just, it it just makes more sense. It'd be like so we tried to roll it on. I mean, it's not set in stone because we need people that can run chainsaws. So. Because if if we came up with every disaster we could think of, the book would be like that thick. It's real life and you don't have a role, you know, disasters don't work that way. You're kind of roll the punches as to what's going on.
In our last storm, I know, I don't remember if it was a conversation or something I read, or it was when the three of us were talking, but that um I think Eric, you had said that we need a little bit clearer written procedures so that if a member, say of the office staff is unavailable, someone else will know what it is, say that it was Angelica and she couldn't be here. But what was it Angelica was gonna be doing? So that someone else could look at that and say, okay, I need to do this because she's not here.
Yeah, that's definitely one of the the policy um things that we we noticed is that uh, you know, the staff went home because they needed to be home. It was not safe for people to be here. We didn't expect to see the the catastrophic damage that we did. So um they came back in a couple days once we had power and 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 things um had settled down and internet again. Uh but uh it 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 is, there was a, there was a, and I noticed that there was a bit of a void there. Um if, for example, we needed someone to run payroll and uh maybe I was busy doing something else. Um and we need someone to run payroll, uh having some of those things documented would be helpful. Uh and also just, you know, the things like what maintenance does as far as building inspections. We, you know, we ran low on propane because we were running two heat pumps up here, which we hadn't thought about uh when we put in our propane tanks. Uh and those use a lot more heat and electricity. And by the time I realized we were down low, I went and turned them off and we just flooded on the oil, but um stuff like that can happen, but it it's good to have a a schedule um for um, you know, inspections for things like buildings uh the to profu- for fuel uh in an event like this. We don't have any of that written down. So those are the type of things that that we can look at from a uh a policy perspective and from a to 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 make things better. Yeah.
And having an additional propane tank so that we have more propane and can run the heat pumps.
Yes, if 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 we if we need to, which we we did. It was pretty cold uh those couple days after that storm. So, yeah.
What did you guys find?
The thing that I noticed in there is the the cell service was awful spotty. I know I had texted Eric and I and I said, I don't know if he's getting it or not, you know, so I was afraid that maybe people couldn't get a hold of me. So I ended up going down to the fire station just to check, make sure they didn't need anything or nothing was going on. So I don't know how to approach that, like to come up with some kind of a plan where we all meet at a certain time and make sure that we have some kind of communication or how would that? I don't know where to go from there. I mean, if there was no cell services, there's no way to contact each other.
Well, it feels like Eric, you you and I had talked a little bit about just communication in general, right? Like you were having trouble communicating with the maintenance crew.
Yeah.
Right? Because this is not without cell service. So we're talking about, do we need radios? You know, some more radios uh so that we are covered in the case that there's no cell service, you know? Um so.
Yeah, and that Lee Lee's been talking about the, we've been talking about that already. Um and so that that communication piece is huge. Uh and there's a couple of things that we're talking about. One is getting um a a a secondary s- channel. Um maybe even borrowing the schools' channel. Lee had a great suggestion that they don't use their uh the one they use for their buses anymore. They use the fancy satellite phones. Um um but we might be able to use their channel or we could just go to the FCC and get a another channel. But um having that available so we have a maintenance and and a a a town type communication so that we're not c- clogging up the emergency channel, um because it certainly is important and necessary for us to communicate with Lee uh and with the maintenance staff through that channel sometimes. But if we're doing routine work and and I'm directing the maintenance crew to do certain things, um and maybe the select board's trying to communicate um that that would be a lot of traffic that shouldn't be on that emergency channel. So um we are gonna be looking at moving forward with that. And uh the other piece is, I'm I'm looking at um trying to get a uh low power FM uh channel license so that we can have uh a a FM broadcast that would be just, you know, one way. Uh but someone could turn their radio and anybody in town would know during an emergency or we could make it known, turn to ninety four, three or wherever it is. Uh and you'll hear the the road closures, you can hear announcements about warming shelters, you can hear all that stuff. So those two things I think would be big steps. Um but those things and a few others that we're gonna talk about, you know, probably gonna require some investment. Um so when we talk about the budget this year, I'll be bringing some of these things forward to talk about uh, you know, a- and we we want to prioritize. We don't want to do everything all at once, I don't think. But uh another big one is just the power. Um you know, getting uh our building off of Old Kansas Hill Road and onto Route seventeen, we would have gotten power back two days sooner, um had had that been the case, uh because the main line changed. So that's something else that, you know, it's gonna cost several thousand dollars, I expect. Um but it's really important when you talk about emergency operations. Um and that's, you know, one of the other things that we'll be looking at to do to, I guess, respond, learn. We haven't had a disaster since that shift happened on the lines and it was a kind of a rude awakening. But boy, we're not very important anymore. So we need to, but we're close enough, we can be. So I think that's a good idea for us to do it now.
Yeah, because the cell service and internet definitely tanks. You got, I think the tower at Elvins, they got battery backup. And when those batteries go down, your cell phone service relies on other towers from a long ways away. So, yeah, I I was having the same thing. I'd text Eric and he'd get my text a day later.
That's why I didn't know if maybe in that situation, if we set something that, you know, certain interval intervals of the day, if you don't, just to check in amongst us, that if you don't hear anything, maybe you should go find somebody. Kind of thing if you're not getting any information. Or if you know, like ten, two and six, you should be getting some kind of update and you haven't gotten it, maybe you should find out.
It didn't occur to me to check in. I I it occurred to me that if Eric needed me, he would get in touch with me.
Right.
So, and I mean, I wouldn't even have thought of what you did. And so that's really important. Because if maybe he wasn't communicating because he couldn't.
But I after a couple hours, I said, geez, the way this, some of this, some, because some some texts and stuff were working. And then others would either wouldn't send or people weren't getting them. And that's.
The good thing is, we know where you guys live, so if we want to, we're gonna come find you. Kind of buried behind telephone poles, transformers and trees and.
Yeah, we could have broken it.
Yeah, but I will say that's actually a really good point, Lee. There's likely if there, if we had an emergency that was more severe than what we had. Um we, if we needed the board to be here, uh we would try standard communication, of course, first. But we would send people out if we needed to um fire. But we would send people out if we needed to, um fire department, the maintenance crew, um you know, just, we'd find a way, um we'd find a way.
Sean, the outlier, we're all kind of in the neighborhood together.
We we we'd got him here too. Maybe in that, I mean, cuz, yeah, the storm was bad, but was a a disaster as it was happening. You know, it's it's one of those, it was a slow rolling disaster, it just kept getting worse and worse and worse. It's not a seventy-four-seven crash on top of Kent Hill, and it's instant detonate the station. But that might not be a bad thing to have in the EOP, that when there's a severe weather event, you guys pick a time where we're gonna, you know, call Eric at three o'clock in the afternoon.
And if you're not hearing from somebody, then this is the next step.
Right, that that might not be a bad thing to have, kind of in that slow rolling disaster situation.
Um I was, saw on the messenger, the brilliant minds on the, I think it's the um elderly, that's the wrong name. The committee um. Sorry, that wasn't a friendly name of it, um was putting together like a phone tree, maybe? Which I thought was brilliant and low cost and, you know, maybe getting our elderly on there too, I think that's a great idea.
And that works wonderful. We do have our emergency contact list, and I think Eric, did you try it this time?
I I went through it and um eighty percent of them were landlines without a cell backup. Um and when I called cellphone, usually it was a relative that had the cellphone, not the older or resident that needed the help. Uh which was, which was okay, cuz I could say, hey, have you checked in with them, what's their status? But um there were a lot that we couldn't get a hold of because they had just self, uh just landlines. So I think one of the recommendations is that we try to encourage them to have, even if it's not their personal cellphone, have a a family member or someone that they, you know, in case there is cell communication, uh we can have someone to reach out to.
It may not be a bad idea in that, to to have somebody designated to like actually check on these five. You go check on these five, so you have some kind of a plan set up.
Add to it that if the phones are down, do you want somebody to go?
Right.
If if we can get there.
If you don't get somebody, or, you know, jump to the next, so the phone tree keeps working, but then come back to the person.
But the, so this is a voluntary list, and so if the person doesn't wanna give us a secondary you know, means of communication, we can't force them to.
Not much we can do about that.
So that's when it becomes more what you said earlier in the meeting of neighbors. So you know that Dave's over there and he's on oxygen and he, nobody's gotten in touch with him, so you just walk over. You go under the lines and over the brook and all of that stuff that Sean had. It could even be a cellphone of someone who's out of state, who's the, who's a relative, who knows how to get in touch with the neighbors and whoever else.
Or is probably worried about Dad too and can't reach him either.
Right, and knows that other people are involved. So Lee, what about a situation like what Jaren was talking about, I'm sure that you've probably heard about this, but what what's standard protocol for that?
Pro- protocol for us is no line safe to touch ever. We can't cut, trees are entangled in wires until CMP comes and ground stuff. Um and sometimes they come and ground stuff, but the phone wires with the trees on them, we can't touch because it's like a bow and arrow, you start cutting weight off of them and it shoots off. No matter if your road's blocked or not, and you dial a nine-one-one, get through, we're gonna get to you somehow, some way. Whether we have to walk through the woods and bring you out on a stretcher, if we've gotta cut a path around to get the ATV in. The help's gonna be there, it might be delayed, we're gonna get the paramedics, you know, medical stuff. The paramedics are gonna get to you, you know, in a reasonable amount of time. So, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of camp roads, people are trapped down the camp roads, Sean was trapped down his road.
It's two entrances to that road.
So there's just, when you get something like that, CMP is so stretched out. And all the private, you know, tree companies that are working for CMP, they do their best, they try to get there as soon as they can, and it's, it, it's just one of those things.
But Lee, I think it's great that you mentioned, though, people, cuz uh, cuz our road, right, that we have a lot of elderly folks in our road that we're worried about. Cuz the ambulance does go down our road regular, and so there were concerns about that. But I think it's good that people know, just like you said, if you call nine-one-one, we're still gonna get there, we have other means.
Yeah.
It might not be that your regular ambulance getting down your road, but someone will get there. So I think that's good for people to, for us to share that information too, you know, we do have the ATV. We do have other resources to make sure it might not be on the tar, but.
So you're gonna love this, Lee, so can we make a fire department article for the next messenger? And then we can also put it on the website and we can notice people, I don't know what other ways, but when we have public hearings, like for the sidewalk and the fairgrounds, we can make sure that we let people know um that, you know, our emergency services are there for you, even if it looks like we can't possibly be there, we will. Um and if you just get some ideas together and give it to Kristen, I'm sure she.
That's not a problem.
Your eyes did glaze over.
I I usually hint at Eric and he puts it in his.
This this one, this one's your time to shine.
So what kinds of things did you find that were operationally challenging in this last storm? Or just psychologically challenging, because it went on, it didn't happen for just a day, I mean, this was protracted.
I mean, it it goes on, it's the same that happened when the October seventeen storm, we got our butts handed to us with that windstorm.
Right.
And it was the same, same idea. It's a weather event and I get a lot of, we do what we can do to keep the roads open, if we can open them up safely, we do. We cone roads off that you're not supposed to go down, and I found that our cones get moved. And people go through, which, you know, we can do what we can do. Uh this particular storm, I found that instead of just moving our cones, we took our ending up in the woods. So, and that, that's a problem. You know, it's a problem cuz we've got it blocked off for a reason, there's actually, you know, a danger there. But when you, when they take them out and they throw them in the woods, the next guy that comes along doesn't know there's anything there.
Right.
My daughter, cuz I keep going around checking all that stuff after everything's done. And my daughter went up on Nixon Hill Road and somebody threw all our cones, there was a broken pole with a transformer. Well, broke about halfway up, where wires, and somebody took the cones, threw them in the field up there. And while she was driving out, a car come down over the hill, didn't slow down. I'd think I'd slow down and then hit the pole and broke his windshield and, you know. So when they take the cones and throw them in the woods, that creates a danger for other people coming.
So we are looking at getting more um, not not, not more um substantive, but getting some barricades. The the uh the A-frame style with the the crossbar, i- it's a little bit more um significant visually than just a cone and and uh someone would have to really want to um move that. So we're gonna get a few sets of those to start as well.
Well, the two people who died in Mexico area just went around the barricade.
Yeah.
While they're there trying to rescue people over in Pittston, someone else comes and drives around it and sees all the rescue people there and decided, oh, maybe I should turn around, because they saw the rescue people, not because it was stupid to drive through a river. Um, I don't know how you, I guess there's not much we can do about people being stupid.
No, but it.
But it affects other.
It affects other people, and that, that's the sad thing about it.
Right.
And, you know, and then the more of these issues we have with all the power lines being down, I think people are getting kinda used to it, so they're not afraid of the power lines. So that's probably gonna be a bad thing after a while, because we're gonna have, just happened, the car accident. They broke a pole, they got out, then he tripped over the damn power line, got electrocuted.
Yeah, just a couple of days ago.
Yeah, so and.
He actually went back to the vehicle.
To help his friend, and and so I, it it's tough. So I think having all these windstorms with the power lines being down, people are just kinda, oh, it's just, you know, it's power line, it's down, they're not, no line safe to touch, I was not sticking in people's head.
So that's probably something else we need to do, Eric, when we have these things, which could be tomorrow, Wednesday, Thursday. Send out the um alerts, at least to the people who are signed up for the alerts, you know, just a standard kind of thing. If you see cones, don't move them, if you see a barricade, don't do it, you know. And and put something in there about when you move it so you can go by, you're endangering the next person.
Yeah, if if you want, please put our stuff back for the next guy.
Right, you know, and um, yeah.
Otherwise, you can get in Jersey barriers, we could go buy a bulk of those, and every time we get a, we can put Jersey barriers across the road.
They wouldn't move those.
Set them down.
I have stuff like that.
You know, we're laughing, but it probably isn't a bad idea, because there are probably some situations that are that bad. I mean.
I think getting bigger barricades, cuz it's more than just picking a cone up, or if you wanna throw it in the, in the bushes. But if there's actually a lot of stuff to move, it's probably not gonna get moved.
Well, when it's really bad, you guys just park a truck there with lights and people.
Not in the middle of a windstorm like that.
Okay.
Cuz we're fifteen or eighteen, I had probably fifteen guys that day. And there's no way to, I mean, they were just coming in, I'd hate to, even think about how many calls we had, individual calls. Just coming through Winthrop, not alone, not even to.
What you just saw.
Take into effect what I was, well, I see you, Claire, and I threw out on the church road, and I was going up to the tower to make sure the generator came on. I was just there cuz I was gonna go and make sure my generator was going on our radio tower.
Yeah, I went up, rode rode Brandon's pole bound, it was like Wizard of Oz. Tried to get his strap down anchor, and I threw it up, and I said, I jumped up there about two feet, I grabbed that, and I grabbed the end of it. And the whole pole come right out of my hip, the whole back went right upside down, like I've never seen that before. Yep, thirty by ninety.
But you don't wanna see that again, either.
No, no.
Well, what, yeah, but when the lines are acting and stuff like that, yeah, we're we're committed, we're we're there, but when they're dead. Yeah, it just risk versus reward type thing.
Um something else that was addressed, I think it was in the messenger article, um if both or either of you could just address for people publicly about sump pumps and generators and the reason that we do not do anything with those.
I'm like third hand, so you.
No, I mean, it's one of those things that it's 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 a not a good idea for a number of reasons. Um A, it it puts um our staff and our volunteers at risk by going into situations. They might not know what's in the basement, there could be noxious fumes, there could be chemicals that are floating in there, um there could be electric current in the water, um and so that's really not a good thing for for us to be putting our um our our people in. Um with a flooded basement, for example. Um also, uh if we try to use a sump pump and it doesn't work, or um something happens, there's a malfunction, it stops working. Um but there's liability that that um for property uh that would be pretty significant. Um and with a generator, the same thing, we we start connecting a town on generator to someone's um house, um and their refrigerator dies. Well, you know, that's, that could be a problem, or something more serious happens. Um so the liability around that is is tremendous um uh for uh risk of 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 litigation, but also risk of 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 life safety. So unfortunately, it's not something, and it's also, those type of situations can be, can be very serious, but for the most part, they're not as serious as down lines or trees in the road, or things that are blocking public safety and access to multiple people. It's usually, you know, one house at a time. So the use of resources is also better allocated to other endeavors. So this is one of those areas where, I said in the article, and I'll say it again now, uh if you have a basement, you should have a sump pump. If you need a sump pump or need oxygen or have a CPAP, you should one hundred percent have a generator. Um because we can't, we can't provide those services, and there were several people that came to the fire station, uh were called the 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 Winthrop were called, uh you know, Lee, and said, hey, can you help with this? And we just, we just can't, um and it's, it's not a a, not the time to be burning the lows to pick something up. So uh folks really do need to be prepared, and um I think it's um, and there was a guy that said he was gonna call the the police because we couldn't help him, and we're like, what are you talking about? You 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 can't do that, you don't call the police for for a a a basement, call your insurance company, turn the furnace off, you know, um stuff like that. But uh i- it's uh, it's one of those things where people think it might be something we can do, it's not something we can do, so.
Yeah, cuz I've been, like fifteen years I've been chief, and I think out of those fifteen years up until this year, I think we've had three flooded basement calls this year alone, we've probably had eight. So it was a lot still, but our dispatch protocol, I changed it. So if Winthrop gets a nine-one-one call for flooded basement, they're, instead of toning it, they're gonna call me or one of my chief officers, and we'll call the homeowner and explain where we're at. And if it's, you know, to the point where there's eight feet of water in the basement, we're probably gonna go with SASSA, and then we can call CMP to have the meter move, you know, cuz then if you got eight feet of water in your basement, it's a little bit different story. So, but we're still gonna address it, but we're not gonna have the effect that most people are gonna want.
Right. Anything else, anybody?
I I'll just say, I wanna thank the the trails volunteers, or a couple of them here, uh who um uh were out uh working um cutting trees off the trails, because those are recreational resource, um they were secondary. Um but um it was great to see people really quickly actively moving to um not only clear our roadways, but also um get the trails going again, because it's a big thing for everybody, um people that need to walk their dogs, so. And themselves, but anyway, it was, it was a great community response, I was really proud of everybody, especially the fire department and the volunteers. Um they were exceptional, Lee was exceptional, um and uh just par for the course, but everybody did a good job.
Had to wake my computer up.
You're actually right on time.
Yes, really appreciate everything you and your crew do and continue to do. And the information that you provide us is really valuable, and we appreciate that as well.
I just have one more thing, I think the fire station sign, if in the event there is something to post, maybe that could be, you know, call this number, you know, I I love that sign. But um that might be something when people don't have to, most to communicate.
Yeah.
That they can go by.
Let's say for a reason, so we definitely can, can use it.
Okay, I will close down our workshop and we'll move back to old business, thank you, Lee.
Have a good evening, guys.
So now we're up to twenty-four dash oh four four here and consider an update on the Church Road Sidewalk Project. Eric, did you really cover that in your town manager's report?
I did, um I I will just add a little bit, what, two items. One um is that uh we are accepting and and have been accepting uh uh comments uh on online in via email, in writing, uh via telephone, however you wanna get in touch with us, folks, if they do want to communicate on this before the hearing or after, um we we do have multiple means of outreach and and getting information to us. Um oftentimes, uh it, um we've got folks that email the the engineers directly, um because they've been very accommodating in that way. But um if I get comments, I they get passed along to the engineers as well. So um we might not um address everything the the way a resident would 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 want, perhaps, with plan revisions and things like that. But those comments come in, they're considered, they're reviewed, they're discussed, um and and they're made part of the record and part of the process. So um we do have multiple means for that. Um, we do have multiple means for that, um, and then also on the town website, um, when we have the final documents approved from DOT for that fifty percent plans. They will be added to the website, uh, webpage that we currently have already. For the Church Road Sidewalk Project, that's there, it's got the history, it's got old plans, new plans, um, a video of public hearings. All those things that have happened so far have been recorded there, um, I'd say not all of them, but most anyway. Uh, and so that website's gonna continue to be a a a good place to get information, so if you have any questions, feel free to check the website, reach out to me. Uh, reach out to folks in the road committee, um, however you need to get in touch with us, let us know, and we'll answer the questions we can, and um, we definitely wanna see some people on. Uh, the twentieth at uh, six thirty PM here at the town office or on Zoom.
Great. Okay, item twenty four dash oh four seven, select board action item reporting. Is there someone who's dying to report out? I think that was Steve.
I'm not dying to, but I I we we did have a good meeting today with Steve Rose, he's a community um. Ed director at at the high school, and um, I've been talking with him about setting up the walking thing for the senior citizens, and they've got a great thing going, actually, and. I'm surprised, they already started, they started today, it was the first day, and from now through May thirtieth, it's possible Monday through Thursday. From three thirty to eight thirty, you don't have to write this down, I'm gonna send this to you. I just got it from him this afternoon before practice, I had practice and I came here, so I have emailed you.
You're gonna write it down anyway, but.
Okay, you can, but I will send it to you, I promise, so it's Monday through Thursdays, um, off every week, except the school vacations. Um, from three thirty to eight thirty, you can go to the high school anytime you want, and they're gonna have a free. Cold water before you even get there, and snacks, and they're having a little uh, thing, it it it's a, it's a quarter mile if you walk all the halls. Every single one of them, and so you keep track of how many times you make it, the trip around, and and they're gonna be logging that, and they're gonna give monthly gift certificates to people who walk the most miles, and. So that's a really cool thing, it's free, and um, so that's a great thing, the school's really stepping up on that, super pleased about that.
And when it started today, and how long is it lasting?
Through um, May thirtieth.
Okay.
Okay, and then the other thing, congratulations, I mean, Steve Rose did mostly, he's he's doing a really good job, he's really stepping up. Um, but the other thing they're doing, uh, as part of this is, is I've mentioned to him about the idea of being able to go in and walk on the weekends. Right, and his point on that is that we just need to have someone who would be willing to say, I'll I'll take the key. To open it up, you know, you have the scan card, and um, what he's gonna do is talk to the people, there's already at least six people who came today. And he's gonna talk to the folks who are coming, and see is there anybody who would like to work on or walk on the weekends, and if there is, would you be willing to be the person who opens the building? And the schools agreeable, letting them open the building, let's, you know, whatever you say, like nine to eleven in the morning, or whenever people wanna walk. And um, they would be able to do a similar thing, even on the weekends. Um, because they feel like that's something that, you know, they can allow the building to be open then, and pretty confident that the senior citizens won't be like, you know, bouncing basketballs off the. Um, sprinklers and all that, yeah, so, so they're gonna be, well, that's the biggest, so it's a valid concern, you know, I mean, like. One of the reasons that they they didn't wanna have the the gym open just to, you know, like forty kids in a weekend with. Out any school staff there, is it, one basketball goes off a sprinkler head, and there goes the gym floor, there's nobody there to shut it off right away. Right? So that there was that valid concern, so anyway, so that part's really good, um, and a couple of other things they're doing, they are also having a uh. A weightlifting thing, I'll send you the details on this one too, Catherine, you can write this down if you don't trust me, um, I'm good with that, and they're they're opening the weight room. Um, uh, for the sixth Thursday, this is just starting um, at the end, uh, January eighteenth, they're opening the weight room on sixth Thursdays. Um, two sessions, six to seven and seven to eight, and um, that's open for the public also, there's a slight charge for that, because they have to pay someone to supervise that, safety reasons. You know, you don't wanna be people in there weightlifting along, so um, so that's that's gonna happen for a six week period, you're just trying that out to see how it works. But if it works and people really wanna do it, it saves a trip into Planet Fitness or whatever, you know, you can do it right here in town. And could do a pretty nice weight room in there, and then, so doing that, and then one other thing he's doing, which I thought was great. Is they, he's meeting, this is Tuesday, Thursday, with Maine General Hospital, because they have a whole bunch of really cool wellness. Programs that they do, and they have satellite sites where they send their staff out to do them, and they're looking at making Marana Cook one of those satellite sites. And they do all kinds of things, like, you know, they do like. Cheer yoga for elderly folks, for example, you know, and all kinds of health related things will come out and it's free. And so they, you know, don't know how that's gonna go, but they're they're coming in for that, and even um, they they provide, uh, they provide all kinds of stuff for that. You know, and like the cheer yoga is one example he gave, but, you know, blood pressure screenings, it's all kinds of things, so if we become one of the satellites, so I just think the. You know, Steve Rose gets primary credit for that, he again is the adult ed director, but um, they're they're doing some really good things, it's kind of what we're hoping for.
Cool.
Yeah, it is cool. And I like that, by the way, that one thing I, he did say though, that that he feels like they don't. Always get the word out to everybody, and so it would be okay to put their flyer in the messenger.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
It's a little late for this one, but I thought maybe we could put on the website, since that walking one started today, I'll give you this.
I'll trust you to send it to me.
Okay, good idea.
It's not a trust thing.
Yanking your chain.
Sounds like trust.
That's great, and yeah, because you can put it up on the website now and then put it in print.
The next messenger, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
I'll speak for Dave and I, all our meetings got postponed because of the weather. It's not a lie.
You're all excited, if I have something to lay out.
I'm surprised we were able to text.
Cause I was gonna show up. Meeting still on or what?
I kinda like the uh, this strap they put across the pole. Right by your house.
My house.
And what do you call those straps, the ratchet straps, yes, put the lash the two poles together, cause one was like this down in the road, and so lashed it, so it's kinda like this.
Yeah, and someone just came and cut it off, and then put a tiny string around it, so I have no idea what's gonna happen. When you go for your walk tomorrow, notice it's not there anymore, there's just a string.
Any update now?
I do, I have the um, committee openings posted at the post office, there's like. Fifteen plus, um, all committees there, but we're trying to get the word out, if you wanna be involved in the community, there's lots of opportunity, um. Also, trying to still revamp the. Listings of businesses, there's some that have just a landline, so I hope to get the first business um. On the shop local corner, or the shop local page, um, at the end of this month for February, but also have like some reminders of. If you're an existing business, update, make sure, you know, your phone number is right, you have an email, if you have a business card, maybe drop it off to the town hall. For those introductory packets for new residents, are those in place?
Uh, tho- those are, yeah, yep.
Just, you know, just, you know, let people know.
Yeah, well, and the business cards will be good too, cause it'll help us update the contact information, which is, as you've noted, um, kinda slim. Um, we ask for all of it, and yeah, sometimes we get it, sometimes we don't, but.
And there's others that have been closed, um, so, and somebody asked, how do I do that, I know there's like an application online, can they just send Kristen like an email?
They can stop by, yeah, yeah, it's very easy, yeah.
Um. And as far as communication goes. Um, one question I have, I know we have RFPs. It's like, oh, nobody responded, how do the, how do the words, the word get out when we have an RFP for like a project that needs bidding?
Uh, well, we do a multitude of things, depending on the scope, um, for most small projects, we have a list of. I mean, it depends on the type of project, but if you, I have an Excel spreadsheet that has probably sixty plus different kinds of contractors on it. Uh, we direct mail, um, email, and uh, most, most contractors locally, um, uh, and always looking to add more. Uh, but we also put it out typically on the town website, also for larger projects, we put it on the Maine Municipal Association website. Um, and folks that are in the construction business regionally, uh, and statewide, are typically would see it on the Maine Municipal website. Um, so between those three avenues, um, we we reach out directly, uh, we reach out a little bit uh, more broadly with with our website, and then the the big. Um, the big branch uh, would be the um, the Maine Municipal Association website.
Okay, that's pretty comprehensive, I wasn't sure if it was posted on the town website, on the homepage, type of thing.
Yeah, well, we, there's a special side uh, page for it, but uh, it's for RFPs, and it's one of those um, at quick, a quicker access buttons. Yeah, um, but, and also, it's one of those things where if someone is a contractor, they can subscribe to get updates for anything that's posted on the RFP page. So, uh, again, if someone has an interest, um, all they have to do is um, sign up, and they will automatically get a notification when we post something on the town website. Just like you could do for residents, uh, to to get newsletters or uh, budget information, select board information, all that stuff, so.
I know we're always kinda like, oh, nobody locally bid, it's like.
Oh, yeah, no, they're they're getting the information, don't worry.
Okay, it sounds like we we do, um, and then I guess the only other thing was the public hearings, so like the one tomorrow. I read about it yesterday, um, but even on like the the town. Calendar that I was looking at, it said just um, planning board meeting, should that have said public hearing or?
Technically, cause it really isn't a public hearing, that was actually kind of a a miss.
Oh, it was.
A missed quote, the public hearings already happened, um, and again, it's, so, I'll I'll just say that for. Planning board meetings, um, they they do get advertised, um, ones that are significant like that get advertised in the Kenan Beck Journal. Um, and they're advertised here at the town office, so with that particular hearing, uh, it's part of an ongoing process that they started in November. Um, but they held two hearings, they actually extended the public hearing, um, by a two week period to allow for more public comment. Um, and then this next meeting on Tuesday really is the planning board just closing down, um, uh, the um, the discussion, and then having their deliberations, so. It um, it technically was correct to be advertised as a as a regular meeting. Uh, but that was included in the packet to show the board that we had these things happening, and you could have more information about specifically what it was. Um, I will say, I did talk to Paula Clark about the public hearing process, and the the planning board has probably between eight and twelve a year, something like that. Anytime there's a subdivision application, um, and so I did talk to her about the possibility of of the town staff doing more with notice. With things like that, similar to what we do for other hearings, like for the the fairgrounds and and the Church Road Sidewalk. And I think that there's definitely gonna be more activity around that, nothing we can decide tonight, I want the the planning board to discuss it and come back, but I think that. We can do more there, um, without going too far, um, uh, but but certainly we can do some more.
But tomorrow's not really.
They're taking public comment, was my understanding.
Oh, yeah, but they take public comment at every meeting.
Tomorrow, right, yeah. But then they'll have deliberation where there's no more public comment, because they're trying to set it up.
Yeah.
And of course, if they. Put those two projects, one or both of them forward for the. CID commercial.
Commercial industrial district.
Industrial district.
Yeah.
Um. Approval, that has to be a special town meeting. And so, well, we, we had talked about this several months ago, that we didn't wanna make these people wait until June, when we have our annual town meeting. On, and so we have to notice that and have a public hearing for that, and then have the town meeting where you could still ask some questions. Um, so there'll still be multiple times to do that. Uh, but the time to get involved, just like with the budget committee, right, Marty, people need to get involved at the beginning, not come at the last minute and say, oh, I want you to change this, this and that, and it's like, well, it's already been all approved, so we're not changing it now, there were seventeen other meetings, you could have done that.
And that's the point is, you know, it's it's, and I know we've talked about it off and on, is it's like, when was that in December, was it around the holidays or?
Everything's around the holidays in December.
The eleventh or twelfth, okay.
Yeah, the twelfth, so it was early on, but I mean, again, I don't wanna get into the the details of that process, just say that it happened appropriately, it was more extensive than what we've typically done, because. It was a special level of consideration.
And Chip spoke about it here, when he did his report out to the board.
That was probably October.
September, October, yeah.
I know it's been bandaged about, I just was surprised, okay.
Okay, so I'm last, and I actually have an update, and I'm not putting it in writing, and you can take notes if you want, but you probably really don't. Um, so. Paul, Paula, Mark, Eric, and I did get to meet, and we had a tough time scheduling it, but we actually did. Um, and so there were. Uh, ten, it turns out there were ten different ordinances that were old, that we looked at and talked about. And so the decision was made that we're gonna deal with five of them in twenty four, so for this town meeting schedule coming up, and then five of them will be dealt with in the next fiscal year. Um, the planning board's gonna be really busy with that new state mandate with the accessory housing. On, but Eric is. I think this is my list, um, Eric is gonna review the nine one one addressing and the flood plain, just to see if there are any updates that need to be added to it. And if there aren't, like, the flood plain maps were updated a couple of years ago, and so that can be put into it, and that's really all that probably has to happen to that. But then it needs to go out to the voters to say that we're including these, and do you approve that? Um, the communication towers, the mass gathering. This um, will both be reviewed, Paula said in next year, meaning that they'll read through them. And if something pops up at them that needs to be fixed, they will, but they, she doesn't expect that, she did read through them and. Just feels that the committee should look at them. Um, however, next year, she thinks we should um, revise the noise. Part, the noise standards that are part of the land use ordinance and the sludge ordinance, um, because sludge. I'm gonna get this right, sludge is banned statewide, so that we don't need anything in there about sludge anymore, because now the state has banned that. But septage is not sludge, septage is when you get your septic tank pumped, and that gets put someplace. And that's part of that same thing, this, it's not just sludge, it's all sorts of things that get spread.
And other residuals was.
Residuals.
That was the phrase.
Um, and so that was, uh, I think Paula described that as sort of her capstone project at the state that she was working on, and it was going to the legislature, and she's pretty sure that by the time they get to next year. That some of those things will be adopted state at the state level, and so it'll be very easy to update our ordinance, because there will be new state. Language and standards, um. So that would be good, um, we've already worked on the tax acquired property ordinance, and the. Cable TV ordinance is being done with the connectivity committee and legal and spectrum currently. Um, Eric and Karen are working on updating the solid waste ordinance. And so the only one that's left is the firearms ordinance, and we'll decide if we're gonna call the game warden this season or next on that. So basically, I'm done with ordinances, because I passed it all off to somebody else. But that was just my job, um, on the policies part, and this is shorter, um, fourteen are ten years old or older. Uh, two are already being revised, that is the warrant article petition policy that we worked on just at our last meeting, and the disposition of tax acquired property. Um, and so we've already dealt with those, so there are still twelve others, um. And we just need to, again, have a meeting, probably Eric and I, and look at those and say, do we need to talk about this one, or is it current? Um, and so that'll be. Winter, spring work, um, he's busy now, so we won't do that right now, but I'm on top of it, so we've actually made progress, so that's good. Okay, on to new business, now we're a little bit over, we can do this, Melissa, it's finally your turn. This is item twenty four dash oh eight two, consider a New England libraries grant, it looks excellent, what you wrote.
So you do have it in your packet?
We do have it in our packet, yes.
So I'm Melissa Small, librarian at the Refill Community Library, and I just wanted to let you know about a grant application that I submitted. Um, this opportunity presented itself around the time of your last meeting in December, so I did end up submitting the application per Eric, but I wanted to. Present it to you tonight, answer any questions you have, get your feedback, and of course, if you don't approve of it, I can always resubmit the application, but I just wanted you to know that I. Went ahead and and did it because of the due date, um, so this grant is through a national association called the Association for Rural and Small Libraries. Um, the grant is called the Sustainable and Resilient New England Libraries Grant, and it was for um, small and rural libraries, which we fall into that category. Um, it was, it's for um. Um it was, it's for um weatherization of libraries, for sustainability in- initiatives. Like LED lighting, um developing green business support, expanded technology res- resources, so there was a lot of different possible categories. Um it was due on December eighteenth, which is when I submitted it, the um. We will be notified of our outcome on February ninth, funds dispersed um sometime in later February. And the funds have to be expended by December of uh the end of December twenty twenty four. These um grant funds are used for, to be used for one time non-renewable projects, so um. You saw, hopefully had a chance to look over what I submitted, so basically I applied for this grant money to provide. More sustainable heating and cooling options to our two um upstairs back rooms at the library, so as many of you know. The downstairs of the library is currently heated and cooled by ductless mini split heat pumps, um we have. Two of them downstairs, and then we have in the front. The whole front side of the building, which is one large room, we also have a heat pump in that room. Which obviously right now doesn't really get a lot of use, but soon we'll be getting use, so the backside, the back half of the building. Has no um heat pump options currently. Um we also obviously have the oil furnace, but we don't really use that now that we have the heat pumps. Um and and the building is not zoned, so if we were to turn on the oil heat, it would just be used everywhere. So anyways, that, so I applied to get um some heat pumps there, I'll explain that a little bit more in a minute, but. Um also to expand and upgrade our patron computers, so that we're providing more sustainable technology infrastructure for the residents in town. So currently, we have one very aging desktop. Um computer for patron use and one older laptop available for patron use, the desktop doesn't even have a microphone or camera. Someone was wanting to use that kind of, you know, they couldn't even do a zoom basically on it, so um so. Um the technology and heat pump upgrades proposed in the grant. Would allow for year round patron use of several of our upstairs rooms with quiet and private access to current technology. So specifically, I applied for nine thousand eight hundred fifty five dollars, which was the estimate from the electrician. For two heat pump mini split units with one condenser. And that would include all the hardware, materials and labor for the two rooms upstairs, the back rooms on the library. Um I will note that ongoing electrical bills related to the heating and cooling of the upstairs. Would obviously fall under the town budget, that would not come under um this grant at all. And any future maintenance related to the units would have to be paid for by the town, as as would happen for the downstairs. Current heat pumps. Um and then in terms of the technology side of it, I applied for three thousand three hundred dollars. Specifically to cover um three desktop towers, three larger um and upgraded monitors. Three wireless keyboard and mouse sets and three sets of noise cancelling headphones, one for the downstairs. To replace the current one that's there, and then one for the large room upstairs and one for a smaller room upstairs. So um that would be a total grant funds requested was thirteen thousand one hundred fifty five dollars. Do you have any questions or comments?
That's excellent, great job finding it. Finding it in time to meet the deadline, talking to Eric, so you did it in the right sequence, so just wonderful.
Anybody have questions?
Yeah, can I just ask or maybe just plug in that maybe one of the three areas that you're looking at has a universal docking. Set up so that, let's say, myself. Who used the library for the internet to work for a day uh during the storm. Most people that do that kind of, my kind of work use two screens all the time, and so it'd be great if you could get there. Plug in, you'd have power to it, and you'd have a second screen with access. Um they're not crazy money, they're like a hundred bucks or so, but having that option, I think. Um you might see other usage, there was somebody else working there when I was there too, because they also had no internet or power, but. Yeah, I think that'd be another great thing to add at that time.
Thank you for that recommendation, and I, hopefully I overestimated on some of the other, you know, so that could possibly slip in.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and I'll just say this for the record, for the public to know, that um when you and Sean and I had met one night with. Chair of the library uh committee, board of trustees, I'll get this phrase right.
Jackie, remember Jackie?
Drew and. Um we had talked about just the intense need to have heat and cooling upstairs. And that Sean and I were all in favor of that happening, and if we need to, we use ARPA funds. We would ask the board to use ARPA funds for that, because we all are committed to finishing the library off, so for you to take this. Step to try and bring more money into the town is just wonderful. Um and if it doesn't happen, we will still consider what's here in this proposal. Um from funds that we have available to us, um because we are committed to finishing the library.
I also just think the more space there is and the different access people are gonna have to library, you need the technology aspect of it that.
We could have definitely used it with the storm. It was a hop in place, um people really needed a lot, so.
So I would entertain a motion to approve um. The grant application.
I'll make a motion to approve the grant application for the library in the amount of. Thirteen thousand one hundred and fifty five dollars.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion in two seconds, and uh is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? There you go, rubber stamped at the end.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
I'm sorry you got pushed so far to the end of the meeting. Okay, let's see if I can continue doing things in order, we have to a twenty four dash zero eight three is consider a trail naming request. In honor of Milt Wright, is there someone here to speak to this? Are there some ones who would like to get up together, Mr. Dergan?
Well, good evening, it's still evening.
It is.
I was about to say, I was glad that that bench is a little uncomfortable, because a couple of times I started to nod off. The uh uh Refill Conservation Commission and the Refill Trails Committee. Uh submitted this request uh on December twenty third. And um you should, I think you have in your packet, uh the memo that we wrote, uh the. The required form that we filled out and a map of the Torsey Pond Nature Preserve. Uh showing the uh trail section that we would like to name in Milt's honor. Uh I don't want to go through uh every single thing in the in the memo, just uh want to emphasize that. That uh Milt, uh who I think everybody or almost everybody knows well. Uh has done an awful lot uh to promote hiking and trail walking, uh both in Reed Field and throughout the state. Um and uh he, uh had most recently, he served as steward. Of the uh Torsey Pond Nature Preserve, which meant that uh he would uh periodically walk through the preserve. And notify K L T and the Conservation Commission. Uh if there were any downed trees or or storm damages. Uh so that uh people could get out there and and take care of them and keep the trails open for safe hiking. So for that reason, we thought of uh naming part of the uh trail uh at the fair, at at the uh. Uh top, nature preserve in his honor, it's a nice little spur off the main trail. Commonly called the Orange Trail, it's a beautiful spot, um. The uh Conservation Commission uh is putting in its budget some funds. To put a bench there and uh put up a plaque in his honor, if this is approved. And it'll be a really nice, but nice scenic spot for people to sit, reflect, rest on their way around the the whole trail.
Greg, anything else? Those of you who know Milt or remember him, um. Know he could be um. Come on, know what he could be. I come to honor him, not to do anything else, uh the votes from the Trails Committee and the Conservation Committee were unanimous. Um but Milt was really more than just an avid outdoorsman recruiter. Uh uh advocate for trails and hiking and so forth, he was a, was a genuine. Man interested in his community, he recruited people and encouraged people to run for select board, um field committees. Um and it wasn't just he would stand there and get you to do it, he would pitch in and do the work too. Um this is quite an honor, I think, uh that should be granted to him. The spur, if you know the trails out there, it's a little spur that heads down um towards the, towards Torsey. And um probably shouldn't say this, but I'm gonna anyway, um I think we submitted two names.
Yes.
And um my favorite is Milt's Way. The inside joke about that spur trail named Milt's Way. It really should be entitled Milt's Way of the Highway. So those of you who are chuckling, know him, um he was a very good community member and a good friend, and I totally support this. And Marty did all the work for it, so.
Well, thank you both, it's a good presentation, it's a wonderful idea, it's a thorough application. And is there anyone who'd like to make a motion?
I would love, I love this idea, um. And if you do this and you have a venture, any kind of ribbon cutting or something, if you can invite his family, I know. His sisters were lively, and there's one in Bangor, and I'm sure they would love to be there. Um I would love to make a motion to change the name of the Orange Trail. To either Milt Wright Trail or Milt's Way in honor of Milton Wright.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to name the trail the Milt Wright Trail or Milt's Way, um I think we need to pick one. Um they asked for.
What does the committee like? I think it's catchy. It's easier to remember.
The the first of the two uh alternative names that uh were suggested. Uh was the Milt Wright Trail, and the second alternative was Milt's Way. Uh within the Conservation Commission, we like both. Uh but we we had, we had to conform to the. Uh the the way to submit a request like this, so we submitted to. It's not the entire trail.
Right.
That's being named, it's just that spur.
Right down to the lake, so it's kind of nice to have like maybe Milt's Way to Torsey or whatever.
If we have an application with a preferred name, is that what we're supposed to act on?
Um it sounds like it's not really preferred, I like Milt's Way, especially because it's not the whole trail.
So can we leave it as the motion is um constructed, that the committee can choose which one they want?
Yeah, I think that'd be fine.
So therefore, we don't have to make a decision, they can make it. So we're gonna grant, so this motion is going to grant permission to those two groups to pick which name they want. Just to be clear.
Yeah.
Okay, uh is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It is unanimous.
Let me just clarify that when I mentioned that it's not anymore, it's not because this meeting is not fascinating, it's just.
It's okay, and you don't have to stay now, it's all right if you leave, and we're going to be quick on the rest of this, good night Melissa.
Excellent.
Um we are probably going to have to extend, so do we want to try for just five minutes right now?
Yes, we do. Transfer station. I'll make a motion to extend the minute, uh the meeting by ten minutes, we're not gonna use it, but just be safe.
I have a motion in a second, all those in favor, it is unanimous, we'll try to be quick. Number twenty four dash zero eight four, consider the commercial hauler permits for the Refill Transfer Station. We have the two applications in the packets, one is for Archie's Incorporated. And everything was there and the fee was paid, the second is for Galusha's Waste, everything was completed and the fee was paid. Uh the only thing I noticed in here, it, did it mean to say identify the number of customers you expect to service? For each town as of July first, twenty twenty two?
That's typo, but um the idea is that there would be um their service level uh in the coming summer months, so it should say twenty twenty four.
Okay, so we should just change that um so that it gets correct for the next year.
Yep.
Um unless anybody sees any errors in these, uh we could just have a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the hauler permit for Archie's and Galusha's through June twenty twenty four.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you, it was unanimous and done in a minute and a half. Okay. That that's because they filled in the applications perfectly.
No, it was perfect, yeah, it was easy.
Twenty four dash oh eight five, consider potential special town meeting to address overlay zoning requests. Eric, you can, you can go through this with us, but we've already talked a little bit about this tonight.
Yeah, we have, um so um there are a couple of things here, um first of all, the planning board has not yet made a recommendation on whether or not they would. Recommend moving these uh things forward to town meeting, that's happening tomorrow, that recommendation, and and that's gonna be there. Um their piece of this, we have all this established by statute, um state statute, and as well as our local land use ordinance. So um both of those things are are kind of controlling this process, um so. Uh we have an, i- if they make a recommendation in the affirmative for one or both of these. The select board has an option of doing one of two things, uh either scheduling a special town meeting. Or uh pushing this forward to the next regularly scheduled town meeting, um that would be in July. The intent, I think, of the planning board would be to 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 try to favor the applicant's uh schedules as much as possible. By having a special town meeting. Um and so what I'm working on doing right now with Kristen, uh who's the the clerk and helps manage the elections and 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 voting and all of that. Uh is to find a a time in which we could do that, right now, we're we're struggling a little bit to find um. A time and a location that that come together, uh but the intent would be to have something um. As early as February thirteenth, but likely no later than um the the end of March. Um and the reason I'm being a little bit non-committal on that is because we don't know what is available at Kents Hill School currently. Uh we don't know what, uh whether we can even change the voting location from what we have typically done for our regular elections. Um and so we're having to answer some questions about voting location and then scheduling. Uh if we can do it someplace else, maybe we can do it at the elementary school gym or one of those other locations. We would expect to have, we want to have capacity for, you know, one or two hundred people depending. Um uh this would be recommended to be an on floor town meeting, as opposed to. Uh the much more involved, secret ballot meetings that we have to have, the ballots printed for, and there's a two month lead time. Um by the time we did a special town meeting in that way, we'd be better off just waiting until June. So um things are kind of uh taking shape just based on the timeframe. But really, the recommendation is that uh we be wait for an affirmative vote from the planning board. Uh we move forward with a special town meeting sometime between mid February to the end of March. Uh based on what we have for available time uh and locations. And um and go from there, uh but I want the select board to consider that. Uh and and give a um a direction for us to head, so we know what to do if there's a positive vote tomorrow.
This is Sean, I would just like us to do it as soon as we feasibly can. You know, we've been talking about it for several months, the likelihood of the need for this. In order for these people that are very prepared for these ventures to proceed with their plans, so. Um anybody that wants to do something like that, in my opinion, I hope we can.
So anybody that wants to do something like that, in my opinion, I hope we can kind of support it quicker than longer.
I don't particularly see any urgency about either of these projects to warrant. I really don't. I, another solar program, you know, and another storage unit. I don't, I don't know that those are something that warrant a special town meeting. I know that they're prepared and they're eager to go. I don't, I don't think either of these projects rise to the importance of having a, a unique meeting for that purpose. That it, it's may, I mean, it sounds like, I don't know what people's opinion would be. I can't imagine they would. If the solar field is, is hidden or not like a major part like the other one is. I don't know that anybody would be that opposed, but I, I just don't know that either of these projects.
We're not voting on whether we can have a solar project or not, though. That's not the vote.
Okay.
We don't have say on that. It's, the vote is on whether we can overlay the zone so that somebody could potentially put a solar farm in or could put another type of structure. It's not, we, we have, that's already been done regarding solar. We, the, the vote is not, should we put a solar farm in? The vote would be, can we zone to this type of zone, which would allow both John and the solar company to proceed with their projects.
But it's like a, um, a zoning thing, I think, would be a town-wide input. I just my thought.
Well, and that's the reason for, sorry to interrupt. That's the reason for going to a on-floor meeting so that people have an opportunity to come and talk about it and vote on it when you're talking about it. Because so many people, I think, are disenfranchised from the whole budget process in terms of participation. They vote, that's their participation, but they don't get the information. They don't discuss it and kind of massage it around. And so this would allow people to find out a lot more information because it's just the first time we're doing one of these C I Ds in town, and there's two at the same time. So, okay, so that's three inputs so far. Dave or Steve, do you have anything to add?
I think for me, I just as soon do everything we can to support people who are doing, you know, business in town and they have a plan, they're ready to go, and I want to support them as much as we can.
It is very business-friendly to do that.
Just for clarity, this doesn't approve anything, this meeting. It just approves going to the next step to approve it, correct?
No, the, this planning board approves the projects or not according to the land use ordinance.
And that's kind of what I'm getting at, is this, we're not approving it there so they could actually start construction the next day. This is just part of the process and it's still going to delay it. So if we didn't do this until town meeting, they would be delayed later in the season.
Correct, in the summer.
Right, so they would lose months. And who knows with the weather, we're having construction season might start in March. So.
Yeah, because they still have to get back on to the planning board agenda.
That's what I'm trying to clarify is it's, it's not that if we put it on the ballot in June, that the day it's voted on, they can go to work. That's just the first step. So.
We would actually have to have clear, have clarification on that from the planning board, but.
Well, I can, I can offer some. So the, 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 the way this works is that the, the technical, the technical review of these projects that are being proposed is being done by the, the planning board a large part right now. There, there might be some final, some final work that would have to happen after approval. But really, this, this would be, the purpose of, of the special town meeting would be to create the, the district that would allow the project that has been proposed and discussed and brought forward to, to, to be. To continue, yeah. But I, I don't think it would be mu, uh, long after that, that they would be able to move forward with the project. Because most of the technical review is taking place so that we know A, whether or not the planning board thinks it's legal, which is a big part of what their vote is tomorrow. And B, whether or not they think it meets the conditions for site plan review and all of that that, that have to be met in order for them to really even move forward. So, so we're, we're basically, we are asking the voters, it's kind of semantics. Is it, are we asking them to approve the project or approve the zone that allows the project to happen? I think it's semantics, but basically we're asking the voters, do you approve this use in this area by the mechanism of an overlay zone? So it would make it happen more quickly. I think it's probably more of a concern for the solar farm than, than perhaps for John. But I, I, I certainly expect they both would want to move forward as quickly as they can. At least that's been what's been expressed to the planning board and to me, so.
That's my question. Is John already has storage? Is this in, on his property already on Main Street where he has storage?
It's an expansion. So the, the trigger for this is anything over five thousand square feet. So as soon as you get to that threshold of five thousand square feet, which is, you know, pretty big for an industrial building or a commercial building, that's what triggers this overlay district in this vote, on this town meeting vote.
The combination, because he'll end up with four buildings, which it said in there was twelve thousand square feet. And so that, that makes a different issue. But I think in the, in the interest of being a business-friendly community, which you've talked about a lot, we want to try and support business. Having a special town meeting will allow this to move forward in a more expedient fashion. It's not extraordinarily quick. I mean, we'd be doing it in January if it was. So I guess the thing is, is do we want to ask Eric to look for a weekday or a weekend day? We will never satisfy everybody.
I would think weekend would be better for people to be available, would you? No?
Saturday morning? I mean, other towns who don't have secret ballot voting, when they have their normal town meetings, typically they are Saturday mornings or Saturday afternoons.
Weekend or late in the evening, but I would think weekend would probably, more people would be available to go to.
That is, you guys do have that as an option. It actually certainly helps me out with finding dates if weekends are an option, so.
But we're doing secret ballot or we're doing?
On floor.
People speak and then you.
And you're in and out in fifteen minutes, right?
Fifteen minutes or it could be an hour.
Cost-wise, it's really not much of a cost.
Right, to do that.
No, it's not.
Not an on-floor meeting.
That's correct, yeah. And I mean, this, I mean, don't get me wrong, this is going to be a little bit of a, of a, of a, of an extra piece for the staff. Because we've not done, I haven't done an on-floor town meeting in ten years. Kristen's never done one. But it's okay. It's not that different. The warrant is similar to what's put together for the secret ballot. We do the moderator, all that stuff. We actually get to have a moderator that, that has a job, which is kind of cool. So, uh, so it's a little bit different and it'll be a little bit of an exercise for us, but we're happy to do it if that's what the board wants.
In the discussion that Sean, Eric and I had, um, in talking about this, is that this is not a spending article. And that's what we really felt the secret ballot vote was for. That the public likes being able to make those money decisions privately. And this isn't a monetary decision. So I, I feel we're still validating that process.
Well, I believe Cushing's been looking forward to doing this for a long time now. So keeping that in mind, I'd like him to move forward.
So is that good, Eric? You have instruction?
I do. So I'll work forward with finding a, a, a location and a date sometime in the next couple of months here.
We have one minute to try and do item twenty-four dash oh eight-six, A C M P poll permit for the Plains Road. They want to put in a, another poll to span the distance to put a new service in for a customer. And the application looks complete.
Make the motion.
I move to approve their application.
I have a motion in a second to approve the C M P poll permit as presented. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. It is unanimous. Is there any other business that anyone wants to bring forward?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, second.
I have a motion to adjourn. It's been seconded. All those in favor. It's unanimous. Eight forty. Look at that, right?